... One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roko?
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beisfield?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Mr. Carson?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Citizens comments?
James Williams?
How did we get to a place where we need to cut a million dollars from our budget? How did we not see this coming? Spent two days dwelling on the budget cuts. I never looked at the actual budget until today. It's actually ridiculous. I know that it is not unique to Southmoreland. It is probably a typical-looking budget for southwestern Pennsylvania. Salaries and pensions are out of control. Who suffers for that? Our children? Who bears the burden? The taxpayers. Eliminating sports teams seems crazy to me. It doesn't affect me, yet I wonder why eliminate three different sports? Why not take the $36,000 you want to cut and divide that among all the sports and allow them to fundraise? Create a pay-to-play fee, $50. It's minimal, but it would create some revenue. These are difficult times for Southmoreland, and during this time gossiping is going on. People are complaining about this, that, and the other. Everyone starts pointing the finger at where they think there should be wasteful or where there is wasteful spending. I want to clear the air as far as my son goes. Teaching staff at SPC may not pay attention to who was around when they were discussing things, but my son's nurse is not being paid for by the school district that's covered by our insurance. These comments are being made, and I appreciate them to stop. I didn't come here only to complain. I want to point out that the one thing we are doing extremely well here. I'd like to read a letter that my wife wrote in support of Ms. Kelly Dorr's nomination for the Annie Sullivan Award for Special Education Teacher of the Year. Our son was born at 26 weeks, the list of medical issues as long as I'm sure you can imagine. Daniel was given to us through foster care at the age of 18 months, then adopted a little over two. Many people have asked us why we would take on so much. The answer is always the same: We wanted to help Daniel be the best he can be. Daniel has two medical diagnoses that there's no cure for, one being cortical visual impairment and the other is autism. Daniel attended Western Pennsylvania School for the Blind, where he was able to make great strides in his vision. However, they were not able to meet his autism needs. We felt if anything was going to hold him back, it would be his autism. Enrolling our child in public school was a scary thing. So many things were going through our minds. We reached out to Southmoreland School District, and what we found was Ms. Kelly Dorr, and quite possibly one of the best autistic support programs in the state. Our son has achieved so much over the course of his first year. There are no words to describe the feeling you have when your six-year-old kindergartener is reading age-level material to you in the same font as other students in his class. He can tell time to the hour, he can do 100x10s, and he not only knows the four coins, he can also tell you what they're worth. Though through Ms. Dorr, he has taken an interest in potty training and is actually requesting this on his own. She has taken my socially awkward child and taught him to be interested in his peers: waving high fives, fist bumps, and holding hands. Our son is nonverbal, yet somehow Ms. Dorr has been able to get full sentences out of our boy. Sentences that help him communicate his needs for the first time. He's able to request something that he wants. Daniel is also completely tube-fed. His oral aversion is pretty severe. We have had many people, including ourselves, work with him, yet he only seemed to regress. Fast forward to this year, Ms. Dorr not only has been able to get him to tolerate a cookie or a pretzel sitting in front of him, she's gotten him to touch it, kiss it, even lick it. He's even letting the water from the water fountain touch his face. We couldn't be more excited for him. Watching her get so excited for him over the little things that are so big in his world melts our hearts. There are truly no words to describe what Ms. Dorr has been able to do for our son and ultimately our family. Her commitment to not only Daniel, but to as well, has been unwavering. We had our yearly IEP meeting just last week. Daniel has met all his academic goals, not only meeting them, but exceeding a lot of them. This is incredible.
Yeah, amen.
It has taken a village to get our son to where he is today. The medical team saved his life. We truly believe that Ms. Kelly Dorr has given our son life we could never imagine for him. We will be forever grateful for making the decision to attend Southmoreland School District. Without that decision, Ms. Kelly Dorr would have never been in Daniel's life. We are certain the growth he has made over the past year would not have happened. Our goal for Daniel will always be the same: to help him be the best he can be. How awesome is that? We found a teacher that has the same goal in her heart. We don't want the staff to be cut and basically contracted out. This boy is so sensitive to change, you just don't understand what this is going to do to his world. He's sitting over there, look at him. This is going to upset him like you wouldn't believe.
Although I truly believe that Ms. Dorr is well-deserving of the Annie Sullivan Award, I think she would agree that she did not get there alone. It does truly take a village. I am so disappointed to read your list of proposed budget cuts, especially line item "move PCAs to Mission One." I realize there may be need for cuts. I realize that you're trying to make cuts where it affects the least amount of students, but do you realize you're cutting vital support for our most vulnerable children? When you say "move PCAs to Mission One," do you know how that's going to work? Have you asked our son's PCA if she's willing to change employers? Did you ask her if she's willing to possibly take a pay cut? Is she willing to take a cut in benefits? I already know the answers to these questions. You haven't reached out to any of these PCAs. What is the hiring process at Mission One? What do their background checks consist of? What is their turnover rate? What is their procedure for substitutes? On average, how many different people may work with my child over the course of a school year? During the initial process of moving Daniel to Southmoreland, I asked if we could have a TSS or BSC attend school with him. I was told that you did not like having TSS in the building because they were not your employees and you basically had no control over them. Now we are talking about using an outside source for these same services, thus no longer your employees. Mrs. Ban, as well as the other PCAs and support staff in Daniel's classroom, know Ms. Dorr's teaching style. I cannot imagine bringing in an outside agency would benefit her or my son. She will not only be teaching my son, but also teaching new staff constantly about my son. I can guarantee that we will no longer be meeting IUP goals consistently without a PCA that is employed by the school district. We will no longer have the continuity of one person day in and day out. Our son is not the only one that will be affected by such poor decisions. I read in the newspaper that you will vote on these cuts as a whole. I am a bit taken back that you will vote on how to support our most vulnerable students and their teachers at the same time as you vote on cuts to janitorial supplies or a new paper shredder in the business office. If you had a winning football team, would you subcontract out the coaching position? You do have a winning autistic support program, yet you're willing to subcontract the support staff for that program. It makes no sense to me. You all could have alleviated a lot of earbeating you are going to be taking this evening if you would have notified your employees of the changes you were going to make and how that might affect their income and benefits. Many of us may not be here if we would have received letters explaining the changes that you were about to make. Those changes will be huge for our son, no matter how insignificant they appear to you. I want to leave you all with this, so that when you vote, you can put a face to the line item of that proposed budget cut. If our son could stand here and have a conversation with you, I know this is what he would want to say. He'd say, "Hello, my name is Daniel Williams. I'm a former 26-weeker with a lot of complex medical issues. There are many letters of the alphabet used to describe me. I have BPD, CVI, PTSD, ASD, and SPV. To help me with all of those letters, I have a BSC and a TSS through FBR. I have an IEP that provides PT, OT, SPLT, TVI, ONM, and a PCA. All of those letters are no fault of my own, but my life has been a little tough. I'm six years old now, and I just completed kindergarten in the autistic support classroom at SPC. Let me tell you about the amazing year I have had. With the support of Mrs. Ban, I've made new friends. I've learned to control my body a little bit better. It does tend to do things that I'm not quite sure how to control. I can keep my hands to myself on most days now, and I don't try to leave the classroom every time I get a chance. This has also helped me at home. I haven't tried to escape my house onto a busy street. I know what it means to be quiet and to have eyes looking where it is important. I can't say that I can do this all of the time, but I can do it on most days, and I can be easily redirected now." You should see all the fuss that Mrs. Ban and Mrs. Dorr make when I go PP on the potty or do something for the first time. They act silly and crazy, and I laugh and I get excited to do it again. I love to learn, and quite frankly, I'm wicked smart, at least according to my mama. I know what money is, and I can tell you what all the coins are worth. I can tell time to the hour and the half hour now, too. I am reading sight words in the same font as my friends. I'm still not holding on to my pencil very well, but Mrs. Ban is always there to hold her hand over mine and give me the support that I need. I cannot make it to my classroom on my own, but Mrs. Ban is there waiting for me every morning to help me. It's a long walk, and I tend to get a bit distracted. As you can see, I'm a little attached to Mrs. Ban. She's part of my alphabet that describes me. She's my PCA. She is so much more than a line item in your budget. She is a huge part of me meeting my goals in my IEP. Can I please finish? Please allow me to continue with the support of Mrs. Ban. Please consider keeping my PCA and other support staff in my classroom, employees of Southmoreland School District. The consistency that I have with them by my side gives me the best opportunity to be the best that I can be. Isn't that what education is all about? Please do not allow my future to become a victim of budget cuts. My friends and I need you all to be in our corner. Thank you.
I'm currently a PCA at the primary center. I was hired in January 2016 full-time after two long-term subbing positions over the course of two years. I reside in Scottsdale with my husband and three children that are also a part of your school district. I will begin with the effects your decision will have on our community and students with special needs. Many of our students that receive services have specifically moved into our school district for our top-notch autistic and special needs services. This doesn't just happen with teachers. It is impossible for one individual to service each child. Each child requires different support and has different needs. This is where the paraprofessionals come in. As a PCA, I'm assigned to one student to assist with their needs. My job cannot be performed without getting to know my student on a personal level. I learn his likes, his dislikes. I know what triggers his outbursts. I know how to prevent them and what to do to calm them. I can tell what my student needs without him ever saying a word. I am here to push my student to succeed. I'm here to help him overcome obstacles to prevent that success. I cry tears of joy and celebrate when he can finally perform it to the best of his ability. I am here to offer encouragement and help him practice until that day comes. I'm not alone, as many of my colleagues feel the same about their students. You will not get the love and dedication when you outsource your paraprofessionals. Take this from someone who was employed by Mission One. I first applied to Mission One so I could pick and choose the days I worked since I still had a toddler at home. I applied online. I received an email stating that I was invited to an interview and to bring all of my necessary paperwork, clearances, etc. I arrived to a room filled with people. We watched a PowerPoint presentation on how to sign into the system and bid on jobs. They collected our paperwork one by one and took our picture for our ID badges. I was hired without talking to one single human being. I was not required to have any experience or training. All I needed was my clearances and a high school diploma or GED. I worked the next few months picking up jobs that worked with my schedule and at the schools I preferred. I could choose who to work with and not bid on jobs that I didn't want. The jobs were given to whomever bid first. There was no rapport with the students. You basically were thrown into the school with a kid you knew nothing about. You didn't know their strengths or weaknesses. You didn't know the curriculum or the teachers. I felt as though I was just a body needed to fill a spot. The tough kids were the last spots to get filled, if they did at all. You see, that's what happens when you get to pick and choose and you don't know the child. How can success be expected from these children with special needs? How can we expect them to perform without stability? It is one thing to have someone come and sub for a day. It is another thing to have an outsourced company service our children every day throughout the school year. This would be a total disadvantage to our students in our school district. Sometimes it's about more than saving money. On a personal note, you are also eliminating jobs of your students' parents, as most of us have children in the school district. You're taking away my family's health insurance. You're taking away a job that I enjoy and love to do. You're taking away my source of income that allows me to be a working mother on my children's school schedule. The term "no child left behind" has been let go. "The children come first" is now a thing of the past in our school district. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Springer's coming up. Just to clarify, when Mission One or if Mission One were to assume responsibility for our paraprofessionals, that would not be on a bid basis. They would be permanently assigned, just as they are now. But I just wanted to clarify that point. There seems to be a lot of rumor about this bidding business, and that would not be the case, the way this would be set up.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Springer. I am currently employed as an autistic support classroom aide. I will be speaking on behalf of some of the paraprofessionals. I have been working within the school district since January of 2010. I am very passionate about what I do, and I love my students that I work with daily. I refer to them as my "schoolchildren." I am proud to tell people that I work for Southmoreland School District. I am also proud that my own daughters attend Southmoreland School District. One just graduated in May. My daughters have and had a great educational experience and have excelled in their academics due to the fact that it takes a village to educate a student. Not only by a teacher, but with the help of support staff as well. Education support professionals: bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance, custodian staff, and secretaries provide extremely important services to Pennsylvania students every day. We all share the same goal, because we want to respect the work that dedicated support professionals do, and we want our school district to recognize that subcontracting deals shouldn't be taken lightly. Southmoreland School District should conduct a thoughtful, transparent, fact-based analysis of the impact subcontracting deals will have before they sign an agreement. A company seeking to provide subcontracted services should provide the district with at least three years of cost projections, the number of the staff members the company will employ to provide services to the school district, and information about the company's safety and legal track record. It should also make cost comparisons between the current and subcontracted services publicly available. We cannot emphasize enough how important it is to ensure that any potential subcontracting deals take the needs of students, communities, and employees into account. As longtime community members and advocates for children, we all bring something unique to the table. We are not simply an assistant in a classroom to do menial tasks. We make something every single day that we engage with our students. We make a difference. We are their voices when they cannot speak, and their eyes when they cannot see, and their interpreters when they cannot hear. We foster independence, teach life skills, we help children to focus, to calm, to manage their emotions, to understand and to function. We are dedicated to the mission of Southmoreland Schools, and there is evidence and many contributions we make in our workplace and in our community. We volunteer for PTA fundraisers. We support and hold offices in our booster organizations. We attend sporting events, band competition, plays, concerts, recitals, and academic competitions for our own children, as well as the children we nurture at school. We provide special needs parents with a much-desired connection to their children's daily school routines, because these kiddos so often cannot express that information on their own. We do not only make a difference for a child with an IEP, we made a difference in every classroom we are assigned. We support students and our children. We are respected and appreciated by our students, their parents, our peers, our friends in food service and custodians, the teachers with whom we collaborate, and our supervisors. We are an integral part of this Southmoreland community, and we were promised better than subcontracting. I would also like to invite you to spend some time with myself, along with my coworkers and the students that we work with daily. Come see just what it is that we do in our day. Please consider removing the Mission One services from the district's budget and open the lines of communication. I thank you for your time and for your support.
Well, I'm not here to complain. I'm here to give you a few other options of how we can get this money without cutting sports and cutting these teachers. If we were to cut all 15 sports that the high school offers, we just cut their budget by $2,420.80, we would make the total of $36,312, which is the equivalent of cutting cross-country tennis and golf, all in one. We wouldn't have to cut, we'd just have to make a budget cut, and then we can fundraise through each sport and make up the difference. Also, I propose that we should make students pay for AP testing, because that only benefits a small amount of people in the AP classes. If we were to cut that, we would save money. Also, if we were to start the SMS and the SES at the same time in the mornings, and they dismiss at the same time, we could save money on gases for buses and crossing guards. Also, if we could get rid of the SHS Study Island, I don't believe that you guys are doing that. I saw that you are getting rid of the SMS and SES. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I did not see that. We could replace it with the same resource that the SES and the SMS are using. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Walter. I take pride in my job as a paraprofessional. The job of a paraprofessional calls for one to be caring, compassionate, and dedicated to student success. It calls for one to be flexible on a daily basis. At the job of a hat, schedules change and students' needs change. We work collaboratively with students, parents, teachers, and supervisors. I love my job and have worked hard to earn the respect in my position. The benefit package I was promised when I took this position is crucial to my family. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention a letter written by administration when we were voting to unionize years ago, two years ago, promising us benefits and fair pay. Thank you.
I came tonight to speak on behalf of my program, the Cross Country Program, and also on behalf of students and student athletes in our district. As you know, this year turned out to be a great year for Southmoreland sports, with our girls' softball team winning the WPIL and advancing to the state tournament. But I wanted to make you all aware of something, in case you weren't already. You're considering eliminating arguably the most successful team sport in the district's history. Cross country has a rich history here, with multiple WPIL team championships, recent state medalists, many recent state qualifiers, and perhaps the most successful student athlete in our district's history with multiple state championships. Not only that, you're considering eliminating all of the sports that are lifelong sports offered by our district. On any given day, I see former cross-country runners running through town. If you look down at the tennis courts down there, you'll see former tennis players and coaches down there, and community members enjoying the game of tennis. And how many of us haven't picked up the clubs and gone out on the links to enjoy a game of golf? These are lifelong sports. In this day and age, when we have to struggle to get kids to participate in athletics and participate in things outside, in this day and age where obesity, childhood obesity and type 2 diabetes are on the rise, we're proposing cutting these opportunities for kids to compete and for kids to begin a healthy and fit lifestyle. There are 40 student athletes, roughly 40 student athletes, who would be affected by these cuts. And some of you might say, "Well, they can just join another sport." I would argue that that's not that simple. Skills from one do not necessarily translate to another. My sport affords every participant the opportunity to compete in a varsity competition, the opportunity to improve in a measurable way, and to succeed on a personal level. Over the past three years, I've worked hard to grow our cross-country program, and it breaks my heart to see it on the chopping block alongside so many other valuable programs. As a school district and a community, we have to understand that offering our students opportunities comes with a cost. In the short term, our fund balance would allow us to continue offering opportunities. But we also have to recognize the need to generate revenue by raising taxes or through some other means. Not just in this year, but in the coming years. A gallon of fuel today costs three times what it cost 20 years ago. Electricity is more expensive. As a district, we have already made sacrifices. We already do more with less here at Southmoreland. We receive awards for doing so well. Thus far, we've been able to manage past cutbacks without our students feeling them much. The kids don't know that we struggle as a district, but at some point, the sacrifices we make are going to impact the experience our kids have. They're going to impact the experiences that are memorable, that kids remember. As much as it breaks my heart to say this, kids don't remember that great test they did. They remember what they did out on the field. That's what they remember. They remember when they ran their best time. If we're seeking to cut 5% from the athletic budget, would it be unreasonable to direct coaches to cut their individual sport budgets by 5%? Would it be unreasonable for fundraising efforts to make up that 5%? Based on the numbers provided, for my sport alone, I would have to account for $500. If every sport made up their 5%, would we be having this discussion?
You have one minute.
That's all I have to say.
I have two questions that I think affect the budget. The first one is, has the board advertised the Ruffstale School for sale? Yes or no? Nobody knows?
It's not advertised.
Have there been any bids received for the school? Okay, because this could affect the budget. Okay, the second question that I have is, I came here about a month ago, and... Okay, the second question that I have is, I came here about a month ago and I discussed the retired superintendent's contract. I have not heard a word since. My question is, who is responsible for this? This is a budget item. If, in fact, we owe him money, that makes our problem worse. If, in fact, he owes us money, that makes our problem less. That money can be used, then, to offset some of these cuts. Has anything been done with that?
It has been looked into, and he retired in 2011, and his contract doesn't need to be reviewed until next year.
Next year. Okay. Because that can make a difference in the amount of money that's available. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jessica Fend.
My name is Jessica Morgan Fend. My son Cody is in the middle school autistic support classroom and has an amazing para named Judy Hagerman. I put her name out there because that is how proud we are to have her in our son's life. My son does not talk at school. Judy is his voice. My son is blind and on the autism spectrum, yet that does not define who he is. Cody is a loving child and now absolutely loves school. He prides himself in his great grades and loves telling us about his science experiments and awesome field trips. It hasn't always been this way. Rewind to four years ago in our previous school district. My child was placed with substitute paras that did not know my child on a daily basis. Every day was questioning who was going to be with Cody, and that created high anxiety for him. That snowballed into morning tummy aches and daily fights to get on the bus to go to school. School was definitely not a highlight of my child's life. Fast forward to our move in the Southmoreland School District. My son now has an amazing para that he sees on a daily basis. She assists the classroom teacher with planning Cody's curriculum and seeing how far to challenge him with being independent, more social, and attempting to be accepted by his peers. This is working. And my child, he is thriving as a Southmoreland student. Please do not outsource our para and classroom assistants to an outside agency where they often use substitute paras and classroom aides. My son is a Southmoreland student. Our paras and classroom aides are Southmoreland employees. We are a Southmoreland family. Please do not split us up. Thank you.
I don't have anything prepared as such, but I'm kind of speaking here for senior citizens. I know you say it will only be forty or fifty dollars if we get an increase in taxes. But if you take that, every year, it's been increasing and increasing and increasing. I think that what you really need to do is start working within your means. And if that means cutting everything, you know, completely everything, a certain percent, then that's what you need to do. As far as sports, I think that it should be pay-to-play. There's a lot of school districts, even well-to-do school districts, that think that's a fine idea, and there's a certain fee for each participant in a sport, and that would help. And maybe we wouldn't have to make the cuts in the different sports that have been proposed. I don't like to see sports cut, but I think that something has to be done. You just can't keep raising taxes all the time. People on fixed income, you know, what do we do after, in a couple more years, you keep, every year, keep raising taxes more and more? I don't understand the para support group. Now, Dr. Molinar said that, I kind of got the idea from him that it would be, it wouldn't be so much outsourced, almost like maybe our employees could work for Mission One. Is that true or not? Or if they preferred to? I mean, could we have the people we have now?
Yes.
So what's the question here? You know? If we can save money and they can work for them? So, well, I don't know. I don't know anything about that. But anyway, I just think that we need to try and stay within our means and cut wherever we can cut, not hurt people, but, you know, like I say, I just think that senior citizens can't take a whole lot more. So, thank you.
Kevin Bundridge.
My name is Kevin Bundridge. I'm a pastor. I'm a father. I'm also a teacher's assistant in the Southmoreland School District. And I pray that this speech that I'm making is not only for me, but for my fellow colleagues also. As I looked at the Southmoreland website, I noticed the mission statement which says, "Higher Quality Learning for All." Is this really true? The word "all" is defined as this. It is used to refer to a whole quantity or a particular group. We at Southmoreland, as para-professionals and teacher's assistants, take our job very seriously. We provide a quality service that is not only fills the needs of our district, but also fills the needs of our students and their families. Often, we go above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that our students receive the highest quality assistance that they can receive, which sometimes consists of us going into our own pockets to ensure that our students get the most exemplary care that they can get. We not only serve with the help of our teachers, but we provide a desirable role model for each and every one of our students, as well as representing our district and our teacher's professionals as well. We have formed an undeniable bond with our students and have been created between the students and the parents, and not only the parents, but the families of the students. We assist with each and every one of their needs. Every day, we face challenges, never knowing if our student's going to have a good day or a bad one. We often wonder if something is going to alter the daily schedule, which will cause our student to become distracted or even upset. But we know our students, and we make the best out of what we can do for them. We are not just here for a paycheck. We are here to make sure our students get the best care that they can get and that they will become successful and valuable members of our society, our community, and our workforce. In our mission statement, it says, "Higher Learning for All." We ask this of you to consider this. As a para-professional and teacher's aides, we give our all, every day, providing and ensuring that our students get the best and highest quality education that they can receive because we believe in what we do. Thank you.
My name's Jamie Fisher, and I am a Southmoreland resident. My children go to Southmoreland School District, and I am a learning support aide in the Southmoreland Elementary School. And I'm just speaking from the heart tonight. I just want to start off by saying I'm speaking for myself and behalf of my Southmoreland team that I work with. When I first was hired onto Southmoreland, I must admit how proud I was to be part of Southmoreland Team because when I was subbing for Southmoreland, I couldn't believe what a good team they had. And it amazed me how wonderful they were with the children, each other, and I'm just so proud to say that I am a Southmoreland employee and I get to work with these children every single day. When I, and I have to say that with the administrators that I work with, the staff, the parents, custodians, cafeteria workers, all the employees, and we have to save the best for last, we have to realize our Southmoreland children need us. And as a team, I know we pour our heart and soul into our jobs. We go above and beyond for our children. Every employee at Southmoreland School District is an important part in our children's lives, in our community, in the world that we live in today. I'm willing to stand up for my team and the children that we work with. They're our future. We have to give the opportunity for them to succeed in their lives. They're going to be our society. They're going to be the one owning businesses, raising their families in our school district. We want them to stay and thrive in our district. We don't want them to move away. We want to be part of this team. We have a wonderful team. And being such a good team, I believe that's possible. I see it on a daily basis. So please consider subcontracting us out to Mission One. We really want to be part of the Southmoreland Team. And there's other things that you have to consider also. If you subcontract us out, who's going to be willing to go above and beyond and do parent pickup, lunch duties, cover areas that we have to do on a daily basis? We're there. We are everywhere during the day. You can pull us no matter where we need to go. We're there for the children and the staff. I just want to say a couple comments here. Good leadership isn't about advancing yourself, it's about advancing your team. And tough times don't last. Tough teams do. Individual commitment to a group effort, that is what makes a team work, a company work, a society work, a civilization work. So I hope you guys please reconsider sending everybody to Mission One. Thank you for your time.
Ten years ago, I purchased a home in Scottsdale. As a child, I lived in Connelsville and moved to New York, spending many of my adult years in New York. Prior to becoming a parent, I knew that I wanted my future children to be raised in a small town with a good school district. I chose to raise my children in Scottsdale because of this school district. One year after the purchase of my home, my two-year-old son was diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. Three years later, in kindergarten, my son began to receive gifted instruction in addition to autism support. He is a straight-A student, and by the age of eight, has authored a book that has been published. Although my son is exceptionally bright, his academic success depends on the qualifications and personality of the para-professional placed in his classroom. I am concerned that by moving current support staff to Mission One, we will lose the highly skilled professionals who have made the autism program at Southmoreland successful. My child depends on consistency. He requires support from a para-professional who is as invested in his success as I am. I ask that the board take into consideration that the success of non-disabled children in a classroom also depends on the skills of the para-professional. At SES, Allison Polakowski has worked diligently with the para-professional staff to ensure each child's needs are met. The support staff is able to detect and de-escalate a potential issue that could disrupt a classroom. For example, perhaps the spectrum child becomes distracted by the sound of a delivery truck driving past his window. He's now lost in his assignment and begins to show signs of panic. An experienced para-professional will also have noticed that truck driving by. Eyes will be on that child immediately, and within seconds, that child will be back on track with his classmates. Experienced para-professionals ensure that teaching staff is able to continue with his or her lesson plans without disruption. Amanda Springer, Grace Burke, Pat Walter, Kevin Bundridge, Stephanie Ban, Ashley Swank. We have had experience with these individuals and know they are loving, dedicated employees who possess excellent communication skills, huge amounts of patience, and are dedicated to ensuring the district goals are met, eliminating failure. They are able to monitor, assess, and redirect with ease. If the board plans to eliminate two para-professional positions, I ask that the board would take the time to consider the feedback of autism spectrum parents and the feedback of teaching staff before making this consideration, the decision. I will also ask that the board think about the school district mission statement, "Higher Quality Learning for All," before making their decision to rehire para-professionals through Mission One. We must protect loyal education support professionals from having their jobs outsourced to for-profit companies. If we want this program to continue to be successful, the district must do everything within their power to retain current staff. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Tyann Pence. My daughter's name is Alicia Durr. Alicia will be attending her first year in the high school this fall. I am here today because I recently heard that Southmoreland School District is considering cutting the tennis, golf, and cross-country programs. My words may not be enough to change the outcome of this decision, but I feel the need to speak up on behalf of my daughter and the other children that this may affect. Alicia has spent the last five years of her young life preparing herself for the high school tennis team. Her dreams are to become a successful tennis player. She believes that four years of high school will give her the experience that she needs to hopefully allow her to continue on this path throughout college. She has spent countless hours practicing to achieve this goal, not to mention the rather large amount of money that her parents put towards the lessons to give her this opportunity. We never any million years saw this coming. I'm sure there are many other families out there, which they're here today, are facing the same shock with similar stories. There are many people in this room today that I know on a personal level. I know you must know how I'm feeling. Can you only imagine if you had to tell your child that the sport that they had chosen and worked so hard to succeed in is no longer? I am not sure how much money cutting these programs will save. I don't know the figures. But I do know that there has to be another way, something we can do as parents, maybe? Fundraising, anything, pay-to-play? I actually liked, I think his name's Tim's Idea. We as adults say we need to keep these young kids involved in sports and activities to keep them out of trouble. I don't see how cutting any of these programs can be the answer. So just a few questions. Number one, is it worth it? Number two, are we saving that much money? Or number three, is there anything else that we can do? It's not just about sports for these kids. It's about their future and the possible opportunities that they will lose if these programs are cut. I've taught Alicia that if she works hard and is dedicated to something, that in the end, it will pay off and she will be successful. Please don't make me go home tonight and tell her that all of her hard work throughout the years was for nothing and that tennis is over for her. So with all that said, it's more of a personal thing, I just ask you tonight to please vote... against cutting these teams, and let's take our time and try to find another solution for this. That's all.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the PCA's in Mission One. Oh, I'm nervous, sorry. We moved to the Southmoreland School District and bought our home in Scottsdale because of the education that I knew that my children were going to get here. My son has autism. He is intimately connected to Mrs. Neville and Mrs. Tilkah and Mr. Haichu and Mrs. Durr. And these people have made a huge difference in our lives. It's important to me and to our community that we have professionals that are there to help our children with special needs to become a part of our community, as a part of them being successful citizens when they grow up, so they can continue to contribute like we do. And part of that is we have an obligation to the employees who do that, that help those children become successful. And that means things like benefits and fair wages and knowing that there's pride that you're a part of the same team, not a fragmented one. It Takes a Village is a powerful image, and part of taking a village is taking care of your people. And taking care of our paraprofessionals is a part of taking care of our village. So, thank you very much.
It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the May 10th, May 17th, and May 24th, 2018 school board minutes.
Motion? Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski? Roll call?
I can do a voice vote.
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reports? CWCTC report?
I have no WIU report.
PSBA liaison?
Yes, I have a little bit here. Pennsylvania lawmakers are taking proactive steps in the areas of school safety. The proposed $32.7 billion state budget includes $60 million to fund public school and community safety measures and increasing funding for school safety. And that would be school safety grants, which would go from $1.5 million to $10 million. These grants are available to public and parochial schools to use to hire school police or resource officers or buy safety equipment. Both the Senate and the House Republican leaders referred to this as not likely to be the last time that they're going to be dealing with this. It won't be a one-time thing. Senate Republicans plan to hold a series of public hearings over the summer with plans on taking action on school safety in the fall after receiving feedback. The plan for distributing money is a work in progress, but they anticipate that every school district will receive a share. Funding for the $60 million grant program will come from all three governmental branches and be placed in a restricted fund, specifically for school and safety initiatives. So, that's always a good thing to hear. How soon that's going to happen or trickle down, we don't know, but at least it's in the works. That's all I have.
Anti-bullying committee report.
We never did get together. Time ran out at the end of the year, and I believe Mr. Mashia and I will, you'll be reaching out to that gentleman in the fall to try to get something set up. We want to get something implemented at the beginning of the year as soon as possible.
Very good. So. School Safety Committee?
I'd love to discuss it. I plan on getting with Mr. Kiefer in the next couple weeks to discuss the summer activities and plans.
Superintendent's report.
I had the pleasure of attending Class 8 Baccalaureate, the Scholars Bankland, and participating commencement exercises for the class of 18. All four of those events were very nicely done, and congratulations to the class of 2018. I also had the opportunity to attend two of our Scotty softball playoff games, Whipple Championship Scotties, felt in the Phillipsburg Osceola Mounties, and the PIAA semifinals. Congratulations to our girls on winning the Whipple Championship and making it to the semifinals at the state level. Congratulations also to Southmoreland High School, named one of five silver medal-winning high schools in Westmoreland County. Other winners included Franklin Regional, Norwood, Latrobe, and Ligonier Valley. Be sure to check out our high school's banner on the wall near the cafeteria exit as you leave. Congratulations to Kelly Durr, teacher at SBC, who is the recipient of the WIU Annie Sullivan Award. We've completed interviews for the assistant principal positions and are in the process of interviewing for the food service director position. We're beginning work on the 2018-2019 federal program grants and the school safety grant. Those grants open today for our input. And finally, this is my final regular board meeting. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the board and the Southmoreland community for the opportunities that I've been given to serve the students of this district. The past 25 years have been most rewarding for me, both personally and professionally, and I wish the district and its incoming superintendent, Mr. Mashia, all the best in the years to come. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Solicitor report.
Since I spoke last week, I have nothing to add to that.
There's no standing.
It is recommended that the board approve the May 2018 summer report, May 2018 fund accounting, check summary, and the May 2018 treasury report.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second. Mr. Beistel? Roll call?
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine.
All business?
It is recommended that the board approve the May 2018 summer report, May 2018 fund accounting, check summary, and the May 2018 treasury report.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second. Mr. Beistel? Roll call?
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine.
All business?
It is recommended that the board approve the budgetary adjustments as recommended by administration. The list of adjustments is attached.
Just to clarify there, in addition to the adjustments that you were given last week, there were a number of other things that have transpired. We found out this week that we will be receiving a rebate from the healthcare consortium in the amount of $150,000. Now, I have to stress that this is a one-time rebate and it's not recurring money, but it is $150,000 that we will be receiving sometime in July that we weren't actually expecting. We also had some additional options that you could consider. An option that we were giving you was a curtailment of the middle school computer program, the swimming program at the Greensburg YMCA for artistic and life skills program. That would be a $3,000 savings and transportation as well. And I have to add there that Clareview School is also considering discontinuing that program, so it may not even exist in the upcoming year, we're not sure. Another suggestion was to eliminate one elementary library position and moving that individual into a classroom, which would result in the furlough of one elementary teacher. There's a possibility that one secretary at Southmoreland Primary Center could also possibly be eliminated. We looked at our custodial hours again and came up with 16 additional hours per day that could be eliminated. And then in terms of athletics, the supplemental weight room supervisor could be eliminated as well as one assistant coach in each of the following areas: high school football, high school JV baseball, high school JV boys' basketball, assistant boys' soccer, coach one of those assistants, and also one high school track assistant coach. So those were some other options that we wanted to present for you to consider.
Can I, or would you consider a motion to accept the resolution to schedule a special voting meeting for Wednesday to give us a little more time to review the budget cuts, consider our people who came and talked to us this evening?
Do you want me to read it in its entirety? It's very technical, I'm sorry. This is, I discussed the problems of dealing with all this in one night.
This is Love, and I had, and discussed the problems of trying to deal with all this one night. And in trying to make this a more orderly process, the Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland, I'm sorry, the Board, everybody schedules and authorizes and directs the secretary to advertise that. The Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District will hold a special meeting on Wednesday, June 27th, at 200 Scotty Way, Scottsdale, PA 15683, starting at 7:00 PM local prevailing time, in order to approve budgetary adjustments for inclusion in the final budget resolution for the general fund budget for 2018-2019, and to give directions to the business manager to prepare calculations for options for tax increases within the index, Special Session Act I, June 27, 2006, PL 1873, for millages and taxes, the results of which would then be placed on the agenda to be considered for a final vote at the previously advertised meeting on June 28, 2018, at 7:00 PM, as above, and such general business as may become before the board.
Mrs. Rhodes made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Before we go down here, I apologize for missing last week's meeting, but I think we should definitely talk about this a little bit tonight because there's so much. And I know that Ken had said he'd like to, you know, I've heard that we'd like to treat it as one package, you know, cut. But I think we need to treat this as a à la court menu and really nitpick it because there's, this is some very sensitive stuff. And I, and I do understand that if we don't, whatever we don't do now, we're going to have to be dealing with next year, and it's going to be even worse. But I really think we need to fine-tune this a little bit. You know, no one wants to see cuts, no one wants to see tax raises, you know, that. But it's too, it's too hard to do over 140, 130, 133 items. And, you know, and we're not going to know any more information tonight than we do next Wednesday. We're not going to, I'm probably not going to study this for the rest of the week. So I think we really need to dissect this a little bit and see where we're all at because it's, we owe it to the community to, you know, try to air this thing out a little bit instead of, you know. We just need to figure it out. You know, I come into this thing, you know, blindfolded, not knowing, and I knew that safety was my biggest concern, and I never asked if we had money, what this thing was. I didn't know what any financials were. And right away, I jumped the gun and, you know, gone on board with the PTA, did the pasta dinner, it was very successful. So I'm not, you know, believe me, I'm for the people and not, you know, trying to raise taxes and do all this, but I think a tax raise is inevitable. It's coming, it's here. But these cuts, I think we just need to really start talking about it a little bit. And maybe we need to reconsider these vice president, not vice president, the vice principals and, you know, really rethink this thing because it's too much to decide in a week. And I'm sure not everyone here is going to be pondering on this for the next seven days. You know, we need to sort of figure this thing out a little bit tonight and a little bit next week. I'd just like to get everyone's fill for how they feel about this.
My own opinion about this, I think we ought to address what the people brought to us tonight. And other things will go by the way it's supposed to go. The people that showed interest to come here tonight and speak, I think those are the people we should have respect for and go over and see if we can save it or we can and just not vote the whole thing. It has to be discussed.
Absolutely.
Because every gentleman...
So how does that conversation begin here? Opening suggestions? Like I said, I don't know how much detail we got into last week, but there's a lot of information here.
I understand, so we can debate it.
So, I'd like to schedule a meeting and then continue discussion on this. I can't, I don't think we have to discuss the team meetings.
We have to do roll call on the motions and then continue to discuss. Okay, we're going to do roll call on the motion to come back to a meeting on Wednesday, and then we'll continue to discuss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
I didn't understand.
This is to have a meeting, have a meeting on Wednesday.
But then we're going to continue to discuss.
But you're going to continue this discussion because there's a motion on the floor to have another meeting on Wednesday.
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
I'll vote in favor, but I'm not sure if I can make it that way.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Yes. Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine votes yes.
Probably call for a motion to discuss a specific file. I don't know how to say it. Are we discussing Mission One? Can I have a motion to discuss a specific line item, Mission One?
Thank you, both.
Mr. Beistel, second?
Second.
Mr. Fry? Roll call, please.
Yeah, I need a roll call. I need to take a question.
Voice vote. All in favor?
You have a question?
Question on a motion? Does that mean we're voting like tonight, or is that just me to discuss?
We're discussing.
Just a question.
You may vote.
That would require another motion if you were going to vote. This is to discuss it.
David, repeat yourself. Repeat into the microphone. We can't hear you.
You need to leave your microphone. I'm sorry.
Now, repeat what you just said so we can hear it. The motion is to discuss it. Whether or not you're going to vote on anything would require another motion. So you're discussing pros and cons and getting information about that particular line item or any other ones you want to bring up tonight.
How many, how many parat employees or paraprofessionals or how many people does this affect?
Ron, how many paras do we have?
We currently have 14 people in the position of classroom assistant. We currently have nine people in the position of personal care assistant. However, that number is fluid with students who have no longer need for PCA's and incoming students from early intervention programs who are going to need PCA paraprofessionals assigned to them. Right now, based on the information that I have, you are at a loss. So we currently have 23, and for the upcoming school year, we're going to need 23.
Now, what is your suggestion for this? To keep the program the way it is or move?
Well, my, my recommendation and my personal opinion is consistent with those that spoke today. I don't want those positions to be outsourced. I want them to be able to stay within the district. We work best with providing instances in where money can be saved. Can money be saved? Yes. Is it a lot? No. Is it worth it? My thinking, no.
Okay, I have a question. Please help let me, I'm kind of confused by all of this because you're, people are saying like they want to stay and you're saying we're not taking you to Mission One. Like what does all this mean? Are they staying? Are they not staying? Are we paying them?
To answer your question, when we spoke and Mr. Haichu...
To answer your question, when we spoke and Mr. Haichu spoke with the district manager of Mission One, Mission One is able to hire our current staff. Background checks that they currently have would transfer, they would, they would transfer and become Mission One employees and continue to be assigned where they are currently assigned. There is a surcharge that Mission One has over, over and above what their daily wage would be. For example, if, I'm going to use a silly number here. If they make $5 a day, the district might pay $6 a day for Mission One's overhead, their payroll taxes, things of that nature. The drawback for the paraprofessionals, and it is a drawback, and by the way, I don't disagree with anything that any of you have said today. We have a cadre of people that do amazing things every day. But as Mr. Haichu said, we were tasked with, you know, trying to get this, this budget in order. The district would not be paying into Peasars if, if we were to go with Mission One. That's a savings to the district. It's not good for the pairs, we know that. The district would not be paying healthcare benefits. They would be able to purchase their healthcare benefits through Mission One if they so choose. But again, a savings to the district, certainly not the benefit package that they receive from us. Is it a good deal for any of them personally? No, it's not. And we understand that. But having said that, we were asked to, to find some money. This fines us $310,000 per year. Okay, is, and that's according to the figures that Mr. Haichu got from Mission One when he contacted them. So that, that's what we gave you. We were asked to give you options, that's what we did. And that's where we are.
So if we went that direction, and I'm not saying we are, but I'm saying if we went that direction, could you guarantee these teachers that are here now doing that would be in this district? Or you couldn't tell them, yeah, that they would still be here?
We would, we would tell Mission One that these are the people that would work at Southmore, yes.
But is it going to be etched in stone? Will you have a contract with these people? Or tomorrow, when they take it over, they say, okay, Mrs. Smith, you're going to Carlsville, Mr. Smith, you're going to Pittsburgh?
We would, we would insist that our people stay with us.
Yes, is there a contract?
We would insist on that, yes.
Does Mission One, they have the same deal we discussed two years ago with the high school thing, Radmon? Do they do that as well?
They, they provide paraprofessionals for programs such as that, yes. But they don't run that program, they, they provide paraprofessionals.
Well.
They're a staffing service, is basically what they are.
So it seems to me we're, this is an education thing. And it seems like where we're going to find money at is in athletics. It seems where most of the money is. So maybe we need to start with the athletics and discuss this pay to play thing and see if we can cut the sports more and try to find money to keep the artistic program. Maybe we need to.
My own opinion too. Now, this, I don't want to offend nobody or anything else. You look at these children. They have a problem beginning in life. And we have a chance to make it better for them. Why should we cut it? To do this because of the fact a few dollars down the road. If the state would give us their money, we would know what we're working on. And of course, they don't have to have a budget till even January next year. But anyway, my own opinion is I think we can find other money to come up and keep this program going in this school district for these children that doesn't have the effect in life that a normal child has. This is mine, and I don't want to offend nobody. My heart goes out to these kids because of the fact they never had a chance. And now's a chance for us to do something for them. And this is.
When they go to Mission One, are they going to have some type of Peasars retirement that they can, there's no kind of retirement?
Madam President. Which one's to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion right now that we keep this program and get it off the table.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Mr. Polakowski seconds it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
We haven't talked any numbers yet, but.
Mr. Cry?
I'm also a no.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
I have to agree with Mr. Carson, Mr. Cry. This is the very beginning of our discussion. We haven't really talked about anything else yet. Do I want to keep the program? Yes, but I think in all fairness, we need to vote everything. So my answer is no.
Mrs. Smith?
It's hard. Yeah, I think we're just waiting. So are we discussing like this or that?
Yeah, this is it.
To not use Mission One. That's all the motion is, not to use Mission One for PCA's and classroom assistants.
I'm not sure. Tough, because I don't think we really, I don't really, I would like to know more about it. I guess I have to vote yes or no, huh?
We'd just like to start over and find some money to fund this.
I know, because I don't want to say, because I, I don't know, because I.
Yeah, we're starting with the, we're starting with the caddy. We need to start with the.
Mrs. Smith? If this, if this fails.
You can find money if you want to, if you dig deep enough. You don't realize why you're voting against something like this.
We probably would have found it if we would have raised taxes the past couple of years.
We've already started.
But still, these kids are not going to wait for the next couple of years.
I totally understand that. I totally agree.
Yeah, you're agreeing one way, but you're not going to vote against.
I'm not voting against it, I want to find the money.
Well, find the money, you'll find it. You'll find it for everything else.
And, you know, that's the frick buried out back somewhere.
Okay, we need.
You just got 150 grand. You just around 150 grand.
We aren't, we're in the middle of a vote right now. You have to hang a second.
This is back to me.
If this fails, it can be brought up again.
By person to vote if it fails inside, so right now, I don't know.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
I'm voting no, because I'd like to talk about it a little more.
Motion fails. Three, two, six.
I have something to say. Something that Mr. Beistock brought up. Not necessarily just addressing these special needs programs, but the budget in general. I don't disagree with Jim at all. Nobody wants to make any of these cuts, believe me, nobody wants to. But there's nobody going to come to our rescue. Jim Murnell will correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if it passed today, the budget. But I printed off some things, how much we are going to get here in Southmoreland. For basic education for these 18, 19-year, they're going to give us $9,728,000. That will be $71,000 more. That's all they're going to give us for basic education. As for special education, they're going to give us $1,455,000. It's approximately $10,000 more for this year, for 18, 19, over 17, 18. So the bottom line, and what I'm trying to say is there's nobody going to come riding in with a white hat and rescue us. We made a mess, and now we got to find a way to pay for it.
This might learn us a lesson in the future. We got to keep up with inflation instead of falling behind every year. This is the problem we have now. We never kept up with inflation. And a gallon of gasoline, 10 years ago, was a lot cheaper than it is now. And we haven't kept up with it. So we have to go and keep looking at the future and see how we're going to do this. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion?
Just about these items here, are any items for the budget?
In regards to the 18, 19 budget.
What about, like the gentleman brought up of the AP testing? How much do we put out for that?
Mr. Croft, AP testing, approximate number?
We're subsidized now by the National Math and Science Initiative. So it's probably $10,000.
$10,000 out of our budget? And the rest is subsidized through National Math and Science Initiative.
How much is that?
We can't hear anything anybody's saying.
How much is the subsidy from NIMZI?
A little under $10,000.
So about $9,000, give or take?
Yeah.
What about pay to play?
I had something else.
Okay.
At this point, we can stop. I mean, these people want ways. I mean, we, we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. And we have had a spending problem, and I've said that since here. But it's not time to point fingers. Right now, we're hiring two new assistant principals. How much will that save us if we don't hire two new assistant principals?
About $160,000.
You want my vote, then we stop that, we stop that hiring.
Can I ask a question? Is that just $160,000 salaries or is that benefits as well?
Are we answering questions from the floor? Are we answering questions from the floor?
Are we allowed to answer questions?
It's up to you.
Should I tell them to wait for citizens' comments?
You can answer, it's your call.
You can go ahead and answer.
Yeah. $160,000 includes, includes wages and benefits as well.
A piece or just, that's for both?
No, that's, that's collectively. It doesn't. Ah, excuse me, I misspoke, it does not include benefits.
So I'm questioning with that vote, what we're completely explaining, that's not $160,000.
Seventy-six, I'm sorry. Pardon me?
That's, it wouldn't be $160,000 is just what I'm saying, like four thousand benefits and pension.
It would be more.
Right, so, so roughly, how much more?
21% would be added on to that, so.
So about 30, that would about $200,000.
Right. Yeah, and Mr. Haichu makes a good point, you're adding one position.
And filling another.
And filling another. And, and the one that you're adding is the one that we vacated last year with, with John Lee retired.
And what I'm saying is I think we can make do and tighten our belts by making our administrators do more with class. They don't teach in the class. And I've, I've said before, out here and back there, there's nobody that's overworked in the school district. We will have to suck it up and work, run those schools with what we have. You know, we sucked it up when Mr. Lee left and it worked just fine. Now we're going to have to suck it up a little bit more.
I would respectfully disagree that it didn't work just fine, but you can agree to disagree on that point.
Fine.
Mrs. Love, you're on.
I'm in, I'm in honor.
No, it's up to you, whatever you're doing. Vote in.
We do. We're currently looking at starting a PTA in the middle school and the high school. It, it's just in the works. We're hoping to have it up and running by the start of the school year. I wish that Christie was here to talk about it a little bit, but her daughter's being baptized this evening. We, we are currently discussing pay to play. It's okay. We're going to, we're going to take the rest of our comments, that citizens' comments at the end of the meeting. We, we really have to move on with our meeting.
There's only one thing I have.
Yes.
If you're tired of hearing the Rustdale School, where do we stand? Mr. Turner, where do we stand?
The, I asked Dr. Molnar, and he's informed me that the executive director is not in stake today, so I, I don't know if they've had their meeting and the results of it. They haven't gotten back to me yet. And again, how will that help us in our budget? I didn't say that it would. I know, that's what I'm saying. What we sell rocks go for, we can't spend it on what we want. It has to go to the capital budget. Dead balances for construction.
Or maintenance on the buildings that we have.
No, it has to go into the capital budget.
We can't use it in maintenance to upgrade our buildings that we owe on?
You could do it for an upgrade, but you can't, it would not be for normal maintenance.
We can't put a new roof on a building?
Well, if that's an upgrade, yeah. A new roof, you could.
You can use that money and take a lot of this out of budget for that if we get rid of it. But nobody wants to move.
Well, we're, we're working on that, Mr. Beistock. Right now, we've had a meeting with them. Their Board of Directors, the ball is in their court right now, and we wish they'd hurry up and hit it back to us.
Another thing, Amy, and people out there, some will be for it, some won't be for it, and I'm still preaching it. There is no need to keep Alberton open. We have enough empty seats in our other schools. I know that's a dead horse for a lot of people. But hey, when the push comes to shove and you're. you're looking for ways to save money, there's a ton of money to be saved there.
Moving on to new business.
Is there any other budget discussion?
Is?
No.
Any other budget discussion? Any other budget discussion from the board?
Yeah. So, as far as these, um, eliminating the activity buses and that. So Jim, did you break that down, like, I see $49,000? Is that part of the 1.6 million we give them now?
Yes, it is.
It is?
It's part of the...
I didn't know that was additional. So they would be able to forgive us of that if we, they would lessen what we owe them if they...
Well, they're, you know, they're, they're paid to provide activity bussings, but we are not required to pay them if they do not provide activity buses. So it's not a guaranteed income source for them.
Okay. Now, how does, um, so maybe if we don't get nothing else resolved, then we talk a little bit about this, um, this pay to play. Maybe Charlie can do some research in the next couple of days and find out if this is a feasible thing. I don't know how many athletes we have in the school, or what kind of program or step we have, if it's one student, one sport, one band member. You know, we need to get some information on that to see how much money that's going to save us, or how much that's going to help us.
Can you do that, Charlie? Can you look into pay to play for us?
By Wednesday?
By Wednesday? By Wednesday?
I'd like to see two other things, too, that we've discussed, and they were taking that on. The signs and the advertising, something more definite about that, rather than just say, let's charge somebody to put, put that. Let's get it down, let's get a policy put up. And also the rental of our football field. As I said before, there are many teams that want to play on our field that are in playoffs, and we've done nothing with that. So we need to contact whoever it is in the state and say, hey, ours is available, are you interested? What do you pay?
The Silence Project is, is underway. Uh, Charlie has sent out letters, um, has gotten some responses, so that there have been some signs in our gymnasium. Uh, he's working on letters even as we speak for the upcoming year, so that project is underway. Didn't take off as well as we had hoped that it might, but, but Charlie and his team have been working on that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear either what the PIA double A or whoever would be asked to say, I mean, even if it's only to the point of, well, we'll entertain that, at least we're stepping in the right direction. I mean, if they say they're not interested, then fine, it's a dead issue.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. But, um, how much in stone are we on this, these vice principals we're hiring? How much could that save us if we cut one of those?
Two, we're saving, two hundred thousand.
We cut one of them?
No, it would be about...
Hundred thousand?
Yeah, hundred thousand. I'm having trouble hearing you, Mr. Carson, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I was just asking about the, the vice principals we're hiring, if we're, if that's, that's in stone, or if that's something we really should be doing right now. So I'm just trying to keep running down through this, these cuts and, um...
We, we believe it's something that you should be doing right now. Um, without doing that, you're going to have, um, one principal at the high school with no assistant. You will have, um, one principal at the elementary with no assistant. Uh, with Mr. Clara resuming his other central office duties that were sorely neglected this year because he was, um, being a, a principal in two buildings. Um, so you'll have one principal for this complex, correct me if I'm counting wrong here, um, half a principal at Alverton, and who will be doing federal programs and some other responsibilities, and one principal at the high school. That's it.
So can any, can any of these folks be responsible for writing grants, maybe to help us out?
Mr. Clara does that.
I know he did it in the past, but I didn't know if...
Yeah, he will contribute.
So the two principals coming on will be able to give him some time to do that.
Yeah, that's the idea. Yeah, that's the exact idea. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, there's probably a lot of money out there going on untouched.
Mr. Carson, uh, we're also in a year where we're going to be monitored for federal programs, so Mr. Clara's going to be devoting a, a large amount of time trying to make sure that we are compliant, so...
See if there's any else here.
You're good. To the public? Am I allowed to say something?
She's allowed to comment to the public, don't she?
Yeah.
It's not anything.
She can do whatever she wants.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just have a comment for the general public. As you can see, we are faced with very, very difficult decisions here. And is it easy for any of us? No. Have we scrutinized and gone over and over and over these cuts? Yes. My suggestion would be, you see what I'm telling you, how hard it is? My suggestion would be, contact your representatives out there. Ryan, Representative Ryan Warner and, uh, Pat Stefano, Senator Pat Stefano. And, you know, maybe if they hear from the general public and, um, say, hey, you know, the school districts, not just our district, every district is having a hard time. Ask them if there's some way that they could help the districts out. Let them tighten their belts in Harrisburg a little bit in order to fund the money down here to our most valuable resources, which is our children. So that would be my request, that you all would, would do that. It might make a difference. Thank you.
And we thank you all for coming. Yes.
Absolutely.
We're, we're so appreciative that you come and you talk to us. We're, we're here every, every second and, and third, or Thursday in the month, and you can feel free to come back. You know, we, we like to hear from you. It's important that you come back. Now we're going to move on to new business. What's that? Posting of meal charge policy.
It is recommended that the board approve the meal charge policy as posted for 30 days.
Motion? Second? Um, we're making a motion on posting of the meal charge policy. Meal charge policy.
Lunch, lunch shaming, so on and so forth. Yeah, not to post it, to approve it, that was a misprempt.
Second? Mr. Fry seconds. Roll call?
Who's second? Mr. Fry?
Mr. Fry.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries. All voting yes.
Extended school year agreement.
It is recommended that the board approve the E S Y Extended School Year Agreement with Mayor Kate, formerly known as Northwest Human Services.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second? Mrs. Smith? Roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al? Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Do one absent.
Eight, zero, one, absent.
Eight, zero, one, one absent.
Service agreement with Cleland Heights.
It is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with Cleland Heights for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Motion?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Fry? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
What?
Cleland Heights.
Why?
Say yes, Cleland Heights.
Cleland Heights.
Thank you.
Awarding of athletic bids.
It is recommended that the board approve bids for athletic supplies for the 2018, 2019 school year. A list is attached.
Motion? Mr. Beistel, second? Mrs. Rhodes? Roll call?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries. All voting yes.
Insurance renewals.
It is recommended that the board approve the insurance renew, renewals from the Furia Montel Agency and accept the recommendation that the district drop, drop the terrorism coverage from the policy. The adjusted total premiums would be then $219,597, or a net gain of $9,390, or a 4.4% increase from the 1718 premiums.
Motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Fry, second?
Sir.
Mrs. Smith? Roll call?
Mr. Al?
A question. We've checked to see if that's the lowest and best rate. That is the best rate.
That is the best rate.
Okay.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Love? Motion carries. All voting yes.
Mount Aloysius College, college and high school agreement.
It is recommended that the board approve the cooperative agreement with Mount Aloysius College for college and the high school.
Motion?
You're ahead.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. I have a question. This is the one that don't cost us any money?
Yes.
Correct.
Motion?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel, second? Mrs. Rhodes? Roll call?
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. All voting yes.
Bonding of district treasurer.
It is recommended that the board approve bonding for the board treasurer pursuant to the attached resolution.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Benz? Roll call?
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries. All voting yes.
Need a motion to re...
Something for new business first, please. Last week was passed out the sophomore and school district budget process. I would like to make a motion that we adopt this as an official document in the process that we follow year to year, with the change on page two, to change it from, by the first board meeting in January, the preliminary budget should be presented. Other than that, I would like to present the document as was handed out. Make the motion.
From, you want to change the date for when?
I would like to make a motion to make this an official document that we follow every year, and on page two, I would like to change it, the number three, to by the first board meeting in January. That way, we know information ahead of time in January, so we now get to file for exemptions or if we need to do a tax increase. Hopefully not, but all of that.
No, they, they, they don't have to have their budgets until the end of January, do they? Don't think that when the teachers have their budgets and all that?
Well, if we're doing an early budget, that's time, that whole timeline's going to be moved up.
I was just going to say the same thing, that it's actually not, it's actually perhaps too late. It actually needs to start sooner.
Well, some of that information will come earlier if we start this process this term.
Well, it's, it's not that I'm against coming up with a, a new plan, I am. I'm just thinking that that one already has built in a little bit too much lifetime, and it has to be moved forward.
What would you do with that? Would you go through this and approve whatever?
Well, I had commented with Dr. Molnar that I think, um, the superintendent and the business manager and I and the board as a whole, this summer should be discussing moving that timeline up and coming up with a, um, a calendar with deadlines so that you, uh, understand. And it pivots off the one that's actually published by the Department of Education that gives you the Act One timelines. But in addition to that, you also have to consider some other things, which I brought out in my memo and my discussion last week. So I'm not against the concept, I just think that...
I think we need to...
Setting those dates in stone is not exactly going to achieve what you think it will. And that could be a discussion in July and August, about coming up with that schedule.
But I think we should also include our board treasurer, since he would have input in the budget process also.
The board decides that.
So do we want, at least?
Well, no.
Put this on the agenda for, can I make the motion to put this on the agenda for July to discuss?
The board treasurer doesn't have anything to do with the budget, right? Yeah, I don't believe our board treasurer has anything to do with the budget. Correct?
Not statute world.
Okay.
But you can put it on an agenda.
Right, you can make the motion to...
Put it on the agenda for July.
That's my motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Very.
Close? He would like to speak.
Yes, before we recess, I have not officially assumed responsibility as, as superintendent until July 1st. Uh, I, I am personally elated to see as many people show up and voice their, their opinions and concerns about what we are doing. Uh, this, this is a very important process, and, and I, I want to assure everyone, from the administrative side and just becoming part of the board, that, that this process and everything that we do is taken very seriously. And, and we look at all the ramifications and, and we try to make the best decisions that are going to impact the, the minimal amount of, of individuals. So I am, I am elated, and I hope that you continue to show up and force to, to vocalize and voice what is important to you. So thank you for coming here tonight. you for coming here tonight.
Motion to recess to executive session for personnel.
Is it possible for, for me, one quick comment? I have a vacation that I was supposed to do, but two things. I want to thank the Department of law enforcement for all the support, especially education, of this school district, and you for everything you've done. The second thing is I hope that you all take extra help, you, in, as special education director of this school district, this would be bad decision for our children. Third thing is, and you knew I was going to hit you on this, with, for the autistic support classroom, we've had this discussion in the IEP meeting. Did you say it was a cost of $2,000? Is that what we would say?
$3,000 for busing alone.
Okay. I would ask-
And the other thing I also said is we don't even know if the program's going to exist.
So if it does exist and you do decide to cancel this, I just want you to know that autistic children who go missing, 90% of those children drown because they are drawn to water. This is a horrible program to cancel, but if you must, please allow the autistic parents to try to fundraise or buy grants on our own, continue with this program or we just send it on its way. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Marnell, one meal generates approximately $117,000 to $119,000.
That's a Westmoreland mill.
About $119,000 for a Westmoreland mill. Per household averaging increase, Jim.
It was about $30.
Okay, the, uh, one meal would generate about, in Westmoreland County, about $17 for the average assessed value homestead. But it, obviously it's different depending on your own individual home. The median assessed value homestead is $14,000. The highest assessed value homestead is $85,000. So one meal to that household is $85. The lowest assessed value homestead, $500. So you take your assessed value of your home and your property, divide it by 1,000, that would give you one meal, what one meal would be worth to you. Approximately for Westmoreland, it's almost two, about 2.5 for meals, give or take. And Fayette County, a meal is not equal to one meal in Westmoreland. So in Fayette County, it's, it's roughly 0.51 of a meal.
I have one comment, just for you guys. With all due respect, Department of law enforcement, what we're saying is that if we would go to Mission One, you would request us to stay there. I have worked in districts where they have, you are not guaranteed that they will keep their employer. They will not guarantee that we will go there. If you request it, it is not guaranteed. Even if it would be guaranteed, that doesn't mean we can stay. We are already the lowest paid employee in this sophomore school district. This is coming from my heart. I have a child with special needs. This has been the best place for autistic support programs. We love these kids of our heart. We already are the lowest paid. But if we have Mission One, we have no help in order. And if we do get it, we can't afford it. We're going down to minimum wage. It would cost us more money to drive here. It's not that we want to leave these kids. I voiced to you before, I love these kids. But we have families that get off too. And we can't afford to stay in Mission One. Please, before you vote, find the facts from Mission One. I've seen them. Because there's no days off, no vacation, we don't get paid over Christmas, over summer, over Easter, nothing. If our town is not there that day, we then leave. We can't help support whoever else is there. We are not paid. It just, that means people pull off. So your inconsistency having subs committed, if they even find subs, these autistic kids can't have a different base every day. It's not fair to them. Just please research before you make a decision.
Thank you. Did we get our own?
No.
No.
Do we have a motion for recess?
Yeah.
Mr. Alt, Mr. Beistel?
I do have a comment to make on that, that motion that Mike wants to have in July. Proper way to, to handle those changes would be through our official school board policy. We have policies on the book, number 602 budget planning, 603 budget preparation, and 604 budget adoption. So I think we should sit down with the solicitor and the superintendent and try to weave some of those changes into that official document rather than create a new separate document.
Okay.
And then post those policies for 30 days.
All in favor?
I don't know, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Beistel, second. Mr. Alt, first, and Mr. Beistel, second. All in favor?
Beginning on or about September 28th, 19, 2018, with no break in service.
Motion? Mr. Carson, second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Smith?
You have a second?
Mrs. Smith?
Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Elementary school reading specialist.
It is recommended that the board approve the transfer of Levina Hoffer to the position of elementary school reading specialist for the upcoming 2018-2019 school year.
Motion? Second? Mrs. Smith? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Resignation of student testing services coordinator.
It is recommended the board accept the resignation of Andrea Hanford as student testing service coordinator and not fill the position effective the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion? Mr. Fry, second. Mrs. Smith? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes? Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Resignation of director of informational services.
It is recommended the board accept the resignation of Charles Britton from a supplemental position as director of informational services effective the 2018-2019 school year and authorize administration to post the position.
Motion? Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mr. Carson, roll call.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Middle school team leaders.
It is recommended that the board approve the following middle school team leaders effective the 2018-2019 school year. Pam Worten, Wortman, 7th grade, Lori Dorco, 8th grade, and Ruth Joy Specials team.
Motion? Mrs. Smith? Mr. Carson, second. Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Marching band staff.
It is recommended that the board approve Benjamin Wilcox as brass instructor and Nicholas Driscoll as percussion instructor pending receipt of clearances.
Motion? Mrs. Smith, second. Mr. Carson? Roll call.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Retirement of teacher.
It is recommended the board accept with regrets the resignation for purposes of retirement of Brenda Shreckengoss.
Motion with regrets?
Second? Mrs. Smith? Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
With regrets, yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Teacher tenure.
It is recommended the board grant tenure to the following individuals: Dan Boring, Sarah Killiani, Jessica Galawaki, Heather Meyer, Jason Sharick, Gavin Sikorski, and Leslie Street.
Motion? Mr. Benz, second? Mrs. Smith? Roll call.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Independent investigator.
It is recommended that the board approve the appointing of the law firm of Contry Rafferty at an hourly rate of $200 capped at 10 hours without further board approval to investigate a complaint against several school employees. The complaint alleges a student's constitutional rights were violated.
Motion? Second? Roll call.
Mr. Carson? Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, one upson.
Employment of assistant principals.
It is recommended that the board employ Alexander Novikov of Delmont, PA, and Raquel Sutton of West Newton, PA, as assistant principals to be assigned by the superintendent.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel, I'm sorry. Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, two, one upson.
Interim coverage for principal FMLA.
It is recommended that the board enter into agreement with source for teachers to provide interim substitute principal services during an upcoming FMLA. The district will request Dr. Mollar to fill this role.
Motion?
Make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second. Miss, Miss Rhodes? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight, and one upson.
There's no rate.
No rate. At the current per diem of the individual that holds the position. At the current per diem of the individual that holds the position.
At the current per diem of-
Of the individual that holds the position.
But they're gonna, they're gonna charge on top of that. We know what the total was.
We haven't entered into discussions with them at this point.
Have not.
Maybe because we didn't have a problem.
Can we vote Wednesday for the rate? Yeah, but you have to settle that. I mean, after you voted on it.
Can we, can we hold it to the, can we vote Wednesday on the rate?
Yeah, because it's, it's also general.
We're gonna vote on Wednesday for the rate of pay on that last motion. Citizens' comments?
Hi, I'm Jan Kiefer, of Science and Township. Just watching the process here tonight, a couple of things come to mind I'd like to see if I could share. I see this as sort of a privatization of, of a public service. You know, we have public education and now we want to take this certain segment and subcontract them out. There's some good things about that and some bad things about that. I just want to say another point then. It's sort of an austerity atmosphere that I see here. I see this in municipal county governments, you know, all over the place. And I, I have this disconnected, I just don't understand if we're the richest country in the world, why are we asking people to work for minimum wage and no healthcare benefits? I just, I just see that as that, that's the problem. You know, we're, we're trying to squeeze our pennies here to make this happen. But I think if, if we as a group here would realize that, you know, all our money is going into, into the Wall Street people, into the military industrial complex, into our healthcare system. As long as we don't address that problem, we're always going to be scratching around like chickens trying to make ends meet for the, for the public services, for the people here. So as you as good Democrats and Republicans are out there voting for the war machine and voting for the healthcare that we have and letting Wall Street dictate our national policies, it's going to be the same thing. And this is what's going on all over the world. It's like the poor people are hurting and the, they just give us enough to survive. Thanks.
It's a long night, but I'd like to thank you, first of all, for revisiting these cuts in the budget and not taking a sweeping brush stroke and just giving the yes or no vote and looking at it. And I, I think it got out, you know, we had much talk from the paraprofessionals, but most of them, although they, they may be retained, they need their benefits. And my son has a, has a paraprofessional. She would have to leave. And talking with many of them here tonight, they just won't, they love these kids like they're their own, but they will wind up leaving. So I hope that's taken into consideration. There's many items on that docket that I hope that you all take the time to seriously look through and read. I was very impressed with the young man that got up and spoke tonight, showing that creativity from a person of his age, his caliber. I think it can be applied from the board and taken, without taking a hatchet to things and just lobbing things off and that there's, could be some creative thought. And I hope the community will continue to come out and through these meetings, after attending a number of them, it was good to see the crowd here tonight and looking at the deficit and looking at the numbers. I think the community, there's a lot more that this is going to go on through the year next, this coming year. And I hope everybody continues to come out and voice their concerns, what they want, what they want to pay for and what they don't want to. Because it's all on us, you know, really. You know, we need you guys to do better and we need to do better as well. So thanks again.
Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.